Do we have a quorum? Don't know. Oh, that's fine. Julia? Twenty-nine minutes, seconds?
I learned from watching you. Good evening, everyone. It being seven thirty P. M. On Tuesday, June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, we will begin our town council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we please have a moment of silence for all those who serve in our military, at home, and abroad, and for their families? Thank you. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Erica?
Here.
Councilor Flaherty?
Here.
Councilor Hume?
Here.
Councilor Mackin will not be joining us this evening. Councilor Maglio?
Here.
Councilor O'Brien? Councilor Reynolds?
Here.
Councilor Ringus is presently not here. Councilor Ryan?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Clerk Simino. We do have Councilor O'Brien participating remotely this evening, so all votes will be by roll call. Right, moving on to our announcements. I am absolutely thrilled to announce this year's council, the town council's Women in Leadership Award, which was started by my predecessor, President Hume, and it means a lot to me to be able to continue this recognition. I also want to recognize our past recipient, who is here with us this evening, Lisa Fisk Keiger, and Jennifer Dolan, and Robin Houston Bean are also past recipients who could not join us tonight. This year again, I am delighted to announce Donna Inga Manson as the founder of Braintree Farmers Market as the recipient of the council's Women in Leadership Award. Donna has been a driving force behind the farmers market, which has added invaluable vibrancy to our community life. And to speak more about Donna's leadership in Braintree, I'd like to introduce Rachel Horak, the president of Sustainable Braintree, and vice president Mike Kavanaugh. Thank you both for being here tonight.
It's our pleasure for such a worthy cause. Hi, my name is Rachel Horak. I'm the president of Sustainable Braintree, and I'm joined...
Mike Kavanaugh, vice president, Sustainable Braintree.
And we're a local nonprofit organization whose mission is to promote healthy, sustainable lifestyles in harmony with our planet Earth. When we heard that Donna Inga Manson was being considered for Town Council Women in Leadership Award, it made perfect sense to us. Leadership comes in many forms. Some types of leadership are outward and elevated and visible, and other types are more subtle, grassroots, and inconspicuous. Donna certainly possesses both types of leadership, the type of undogged and persistent leadership that gets things done and keeps them going. When our organization, Sustainable Braintree, first formed in two thousand and eight, one of the topics that came out of the formative meetings was healthy, locally grown food. The idea that bringing a farmers market to Braintree quickly gained traction, but needed someone to dig in and really make it happen and lead the cause. Donna was that person. She formed and led a committee to research and execute the many steps needed to get a farmers market in town. The first Braintree Farmers Market opened in two thousand and nine and has not only been a source of healthy and locally grown food for residents, it also has been a cornerstone of our town's culture. Myself, I'm certainly looking forward to the opening of the market in a week and a half on June seventeenth. When the farmers market is now a separate entity from Sustainable Braintree, we're both nonprofits and deeply connected. Donna continues to serve with us on the steering committee of Sustainable Braintree, and we are very grateful for this opportunity to honor her with this award tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Rachel and Mike. And before we present the award formally to Donna, I would like to open it up to any of the councilors who may want to say a few words as well. Councilor Maglio, please go ahead.
Thank you. I am so excited to say a few words and congratulate you, Donna. Part of creating the farmers market is you've made sure that for many consecutive months in beautiful weather, every Saturday, we get to have a celebration of community, of nature, of local food makers, and be able to build those kinds of connections that are important to everyone who's part of a community, building that civic life. So thank you so much, Donna, for putting together such an important vehicle for everyone in Braintree and beyond to enjoy.
Councilor Reynolds.
Thank you, Madam President. Donna, you've had a great opportunity to work with you in the past directly, and I echo what Councilor Maglio had to say about your capabilities and the impact that you've had on our community. I think you're a great recipient for this. I think you meet the criteria clearly. You are tenacious, all for the good, for good, in a very good way. Many Braintree residents have clearly benefacted or benefited from the concept that you put into play here, and it is now an institution in this town. My wife would kill me if I didn't say thank you to you specifically because she loves, as I do, the Braintree market. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Reynolds. Councilor Flaherty?
You know, I wasn't there when the thinking went into, let's have a Braintree Farmers Market, but in my imagination, it goes like this. Let's give residents of Braintree access to healthy, locally grown food, and let's give farmers and other local food merchants access to Braintree. And I think that that is such a simple concept, but what it has become goes well above and beyond that fundamental premise, which is just to open up a market. It has really created a wonderful way for our community to come together. If you go to the farmers market, it is always bustling with vibrant neighbors coming together to see what's on sale, and they chat together, and it is a really valuable component to the fabric of our community that goes far beyond just local business and access to locally grown food. So congratulations to you for planting a seed and watching it grow into something that I think goes well beyond what it may have initially been thought to be.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to congratulate Donna for this award. I haven't seen Donna in a long time. Hi, Donna, how are you? But Donna, it was excellent the way you described Donna's leadership, as you know, could be very quiet about it, or you know, could do the job that needs to be done, and I've seen Donna be passionate about things she believes in, and we're very lucky we have people like Donna involved in the town of Braintree. And if you want to know, just write, just come to the farmers market on Saturday. It's a wonderful event in the town of Braintree. We're very lucky in the town with the people that volunteer their time for the different organizations in the town, and Sustainable Braintree is wonderful. And I said the other night, I remember when Jeff told me about sustainability, I was nodding my head like I knew what he was talking about about twenty years ago, and I didn't even know what he was talking about sustainability. But it's a wonderful farmers market. One day, I bought a couple of flowers there, and I was leaving with the flowers, and Donna took a picture of me with the flowers and said how the red matched my red sock shirt, and the next thing I know, it was online or something. I'm like, how did my picture get online? But it was a good picture. I don't know if you remember that, Donna. But you do great work, and I'm very happy tonight. It's very nice when you can say thank you to somebody who's doing the work and really isn't looking for thank yous, and they're doing the work because it's something they believe in, and they're making their community a better place. And I just, it's very nice we get to say thank you tonight, Donna. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ryan. Councilor Hume?
Thank you, Madam President. I did start this award, I actually called it the Ruth Bader Ginsburg Award because it was shortly after she had passed away, and I felt it so important to recognize women, and especially strong women in leadership roles in our town. We as women wouldn't be up here if it wasn't for Ruth Bader Ginsburg, and we wouldn't have people like Donna doing what they do and bringing the farmers market and their ideas to town and having them on public property for anybody and all to come and partake, and for businesses to profit and make a living, and helping families, and bringing food. The farmers market has grown over the years, and this award, to me, is so important and to recognize women similar to you and to the previous recipients of this. Ms. Keiger, who's here, is the chairman of, chairwoman, excuse me, of the school committee, and ran the vote yes for our schools in Braintree. So it's women like you who are deserving of this and who are, you know, role models for our young girls and women to look up to and aspire to. So it's so important. I thank you for all that you've done, not only for the farmers market, for all those who are able to enjoy it and partake in it and participate, and who puts literally food on people's tables, and by the small business owners being able to make a living there too. So so many ways, your hard work has helped so many people, so I thank you for that and congratulations.
Thank you, Donna, and thank you to my colleagues. I just want to add one thing to every, all the sentiments that Donna has brought to the market through her determination, hard work, and commitment to inclusion, and that is participation in the Healthy Incentive Program, which really opens up the farmers market to those who may not otherwise have the means to partake. And that just speaks to your breadth of compassion, Donna, and really thinking holistically about our entire community, and we thank you for that. So if you would like to come up now, we would love to present you with the award, and I will read it out. Come on up, and then we'll just... "Donna, Braintree Town Council recognizes Donna Inga Manson as a two thousand and twenty-three Women in Leadership Award Honoree for displaying intelligence, deep thought, and making impactful change, and for serving as a role model for women and girls of all ages."
Thank you so much for this award. I did not expect this at all. I mean, I'm behind the scenes all the time, and to be, you know, in front like this and acknowledged is really quite overwhelming, really, and I appreciate every single thing that you guys have done. And I also just want to thank all the people that have been involved with the market over the years, including both Mayor Kokoris and Sullivan, and people in the office, and volunteers at the market, and our staff that includes Cullen, and Eli, and Julianne, and Bima, the Bima guys that come out and put out their, you know, the traffic cones and everything. I want to thank my partner, Sean, for putting up for, when I'm absent, working on the market and not wanting to leave Braintree on Saturdays because, for some reason, I'm just obsessed with bringing in these farmers and these food vendors and the artisans, and really, they're our heroes. And thank you all so very much. Oh, and most importantly, Jonathan Stidham is like my backbone, who is working right beside me all the time, and I appreciate you mentioning that. And he's so important to the market, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much, Donna. And before we move on to our approval of minutes, I want to recognize we have a surprise guest with us, Senator Walter Timmeltie. Please welcome Senator Timmeltie, and thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Distinguished members of the council, it's an honor to be here tonight to honor Donna. If Donna could please come forward. Sorry about that, Donna. But thank you for this privilege of honoring Donna tonight in conjunction with the council. Donna, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And, you know, to the council, compliments. I would say this is an excellent first round draft choice. Donna, you've done great work for the town and the community, and on behalf of John Keenan, my CUSAC extends his congratulations. And Senator Keenan and I offer this citation honoring you in the state senate for your great work in founding of the farmers market...
Oh, well, thank you so much.
...and so many other things you've done untold and very quietly. We know you don't like attention. And the citation reads as follows, Donna. Commonwealth Massachusetts State Senate, official citation. Being known to the Massachusetts State Senate, hereby extends its congratulations to Donna in recognition of receiving the Women in Leadership Award from the Braintree Town Council for your work as founder of the Braintree Farmers Market. And be it further known to the Massachusetts State Senate, extends its best wishes for continued success, Donna, because the farmers market is a wonderful asset for this great town and for the entire region. That the citation be duly signed by the president of the state senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk. It's been signed by our senate president, Senator Karen E. Spilka, attested to by our clerk, Mike Curly, and offered by two very proud state senators, myself, Walter F. Timmeltie, and John F. Keenan. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Oh, congratulations. Thank you for all your great work. Thank you. Thank you. Madam President, thank you. To members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to honor such a great citizen of the town. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator. And thank you again, Donna, members of Sustainable Braintree who are here, and one of our past recipients, Lisa Fisk Keiger. It's a real pleasure to be able to honor these women like that, so thank you. All right. Are there any other announcements from the council? Okay, seeing none. Oh, go right ahead, Councilor Hume.
I just want to wish all of our Braintree High School graduates congratulations. Graduation was this Saturday, even despite the cold rainy weather, it was held outside. And Ms. Lisa Fisk Keiger, chairwoman of the school committee, was in attendance, I believe, right? So congratulations to all of them as a former member of the school committee, as was Councilor Ringus. It had to be one of the best days being on the school committee because for thirteen years of these young students' life, the day you are, every single day throughout the educational process, K through twelve, is to get them to graduation day. So I always loved it. Congratulations to all the students, parents, teachers. It's always a great day, so congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilor Hume. Councilor Flaherty?
I just thought I would take a moment to remind people that this Sunday, June eleventh, the Sustainable Braintree, the Friends of Pond Meadow Park, and the Student Environmental Club from Braintree High School will be at Pond Meadow from ten o'clock to twelve o'clock noon to try to work on the invasive plants that have become a serious problem in the area. So it's the first time that we've tried to tackle this problem. It's become quite widespread, and there's plenty of work for anybody who wants to join us, and I hope that it will launch kind of some awareness about the needs that our local parks, not just Pond Meadow, but many of our parks have, to try and tame the invasives that are kind of crowding out the local plants that are supposed to be there, and that creates a reduction in biodiversity in our own backyard that's really quite serious. So if you would like to join us, please do, and I'll see you there, because I'll be there.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Maglio?
A quick announcement about three upcoming meetings. There is a Public Improvement Process meeting. PIP is the abbreviation, and there are three of these meetings coming up. The first one is tomorrow night. It has to do with the Enbridge Compressor Station. It will be at the Abigail Adams Middle School in Waymouth from seven to nine. There will be a PIP meeting, same type of meeting, that will be taking place focused on clean harbors, on Monday, June twelfth, same place, Abigail Adams Middle School, seven to nine. And then there'll be a third meeting on Wednesday, June fourteenth, the PIP process for the sitco that is on Quincy Ave. So all three of those are pretty central to everyone who lives or works or plays near the Four River Basin, and hoping that people will be able to attend those meetings and hear some of the really important information, and even more important, ask questions about what is happening to remove the contamination that has been caused by these three specific corporations.
Thank you very much, Councilor Maglio. Any other announcements? Okay, moving on to our approval of minutes from March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, please.
Councilor Erica?
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty?
Aye.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Maglio?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. All right. The next item on our agenda, communications for the Master Plan Steering Committee roadshow presentation. So this, we're going to move to the end of the agenda at the request of the planning department, unless there's any objections from my colleagues on the council. Okay, thank you very much. So with that, we'll move on to old business. Two three zero three two, Town Clerk. The Votes Act of two thousand and twenty-two, early vote by mail, opt-out provision, or take up any action relative thereto. I will ask Councilor Reynolds, the chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means, for its recommendation on order two three zero three two.
Thank you, Madam President. Previously, the Ways and Means Committee met, and on this motion, pardon me, and voted unanimously for a recommended approval.
Thank you very much, Councilor Reynolds, and thank you for joining us this evening. Town Clerk Casey, would you like to say a few words about this motion?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. The Votes Act of two thousand and twenty-two allows each Massachusetts community the opportunity to decide how they want to handle both elements of the early voting for local elections. The first early option was the early voting in person. I had previously reviewed with members the opt-in provision of the Votes Act that is initiated by the Board of Registers. And on March twenty-eighth of this year, by a majority vote, the Board of Registers voted not to opt in for the early voting in person, citing a declining trend in this voting option. Before you this evening is the second element of early voting, and that is early voting by mail. Early voting by mail is mandated by the Voters Act. However, it allows each community to opt out through a provision if they so choose. Early vote by mail is similar to absentee voting, but does not require the voter to meet one of the provisions to cast an absentee ballot. Data history by early voting by mail shows a significant variance in ballot requests by election types. For presidential elections, one in three registered voters submit an application for early vote by mail, with eighty percent of them actually casting a ballot. For state general elections, one in four registered voters requested an early vote by mail ballot, with slightly over fifty percent actually casting a ballot. And then for state primary elections, one in five registered voters requested a ballot, with less than fifty percent actually casting that ballot. Voter turnout trends for local elections tend to fall somewhere between the state general and the state preliminary elections. My recommendation to members of the council is not to exercise the opt-out provision for early vote by mail for both the September nineteenth and November seventh elections. If they choose not to opt out, I need separate votes for each of the two elections. Any questions?
Thank you, Clerk Casey. Are there any questions from councilors on this? Just as a point of clarification, so in-person early voting is not going to be available for the municipal elections this year? Is that correct?
In-person will not be available.
And that was due to the vote by the Board of Registrars?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So just wanted to clarify that point. And any other questions or comments? Councilor Ryan?
Thank you. So Clerk Casey, you recommend both of these motions. That's your opinion, right?
My opinion is to not to opt out, is that we do have early voting by mail.
Okay.
Thank you. You're done, Councilor? Thank you, Councilor Ryan. I'd just like to also add, I am in full support of this, making sure that we do have mail-in ballots available for residents for municipal elections, especially since we consolidated polling locations, and we will not have in-person early voting, but vote by mail allows access to the ballot box, to your mailbox, and residents will need to request a mail-in ballot. Is that correct?
That is. They can come into our office to request the ballot, or they can go online to the Secretary of State's office, and they can request an absentee vote-by-mail ballot that way there.
Okay, thank you very much, Clerk Casey. I do want to let councilors know there are two motions pertaining to this. One is for the preliminary local election, and one is for the general local election.
That is correct.
And a yes vote is a vote in favor of in mail-in voting. Correct? Correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying. Does anybody have any questions on the vote? Because it's a little bit, the wording is a little bit counterintuitive, I think, but okay. All right. Councilor Ryan.
Madam President. Motion number one, pursuant to the Votes Act of 2022, the Braintree Town Council will not exercise the opt-out provision for early voting by mail for the September 19, 2023 local preliminary election, or take any other action related thereto, so related hereto. So moved.
Second. Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, vote, please.
Councilor Erika.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Aye.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much.
Madam President. Motion number two, pursuant to the Votes Act of 2022, the Braintree Town Council will not exercise the opt-out provision for early voting by mail for the November 7, 2023 local general election, or take any other action relative thereto. So moved.
Second. Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino?
Councilor Erika.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Aye.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. And Clerk Casey, I think you're up for the next one, so if you don't mind staying there, that'd be great. We're moving on to 23033, Town Clerk. Votes Act of 2022, Voter Registration, Mass. General Law, Section 110A, Office Hours on Saturday, or Take Up Any Action Relative Thereto. Councilor Reynolds, as Chair of the Ways and Means, I will ask for the recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. Previously, the Ways and Means Council met and voted unanimously for motion 23033.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chairman Reynolds. Clerk Casey, did you want to add anything?
Yes. Over the years, city and town clerks have advocated that the voter registration, which was normally 20 days before the election, which is typically a Wednesday evening, it ran from 8:30 to 8:30 in the morning until 8:00 at night, we have advocated that that be changed to 5:00 p.m. As they say, be careful what you wish for. So the Votes Act of 2022 changed the voting deadline from 20 days prior to Election Day, which I said was normally a Wednesday, from 8:30 till 8:00 p.m., to 10 days before Election Day, which falls on a Saturday, from 8:30 to our 5:00 p.m. Prior to the Vote Act, voter registration had minimal impact on staffing. It added three and a half hours to our workday, along with some overtime costs. A Saturday voter registration would require staff to work one weekend day, adding seven and a half hours of unfunded overtime costs for the town, and forced staff members to spend less time with their families. The reason why I say spend less time with their families, with early voting by mail, we will be working most weekends during this election to process those ballots, so I'm trying to give my staff a day off. In the 10 years I've held this position, the number of new voter registration received during the last day of voter registration was from zero to three. So it doesn't drive voter registration as many people think it does. Under this act here, if it's moved to the Friday, voters still have the opportunity to register vote on Saturday using the Secretary of State's portal, that they can submit that up until 5:00. At 5:00.01, that portal is shut down, so they still will have that opportunity to register the vote. A provision of the Vote Act allows for local elections, for local elections only, municipalities to adopt Chapter 41, Section 110A of Mass. General Law that treats Saturday as a holiday, therefore pushing the deadline to the business day before the Saturday, which is Friday. A review of legislative acts adopted by the town of Braintree reveals that the town of Braintree adopted Chapter 41, Section 110A in March of 1951. Guidance from the town solicitor advises no action actually is required by the council. However, for election transparency, I ask members to reaffirm the spirit of Chapter 41, 110A, for both the September 19th and the November 7th elections, therefore moving the last day of voter registration at Town Hall only to Fridays, as states in the act that we already adopted. Again, this would require two separate votes, one for the September 19th election and one for the November 7th general election.
Thank you very much, Clerk Casey. Councilor Ryan.
Motion number one, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 110A, to authorize the town clerk's office to remain closed on all Saturdays and to treat Saturdays as a legal holiday for the purposes of calculating the timeframe for filing matters in that office for the September 19, 2023 local preliminary election, or take any other action relative thereto. So moved.
Second. Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, vote, please.
Councilor Erika.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Motion number two, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 110A, to authorize the town clerk's office to remain closed on all Saturdays and to treat Saturdays as a legal holiday for the purposes of calculating the timeframe for filing matters in that office for the November 7, 2023 local general election, or take any other action relative thereto. So moved.
Second. Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, please.
Councilor Erika.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. Moving on to 23034, Town Clerk. Votes Act of 2022, Police Detail Assignment, or Take Up Any Action Relative Thereto. For this, I will turn to Vice Chair of our Ordinance and Rules Committee, Councilor Hume.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ordinance and Rules met earlier this evening, and we voted 3 to 0 for favorable recommendation for the full council on Order 23034.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Hume. Clerk Casey, if you want to give us a brief explanation?
Of all of the changes that the Vote Acts of 2022 put before us, I still can't get my head wrapped around this one here. The Vote Acts of 2022 changed the process for which details are assigned to polling locations. It reads, "The town council, in consultation with its election offices and registers, shall detail a sufficient number of police officers for each building that contains a polling locations." Currently, the town clerk, as the chief election official for the town of Braintree, communicates directly with the police chief or his designee to ensure adequate police details are assigned to each voting center, as well as add additional support as required. I'm asking support of the council members for the proposed motion. Upon the request of the town clerk, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, it is so ordered that the town council defers their authority under the Votes Act of 2022, Chapter 92, Section 72, on police details for elections to the town clerk and the police chief for all their designees until revote by council vote. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Clerk Casey. Any questions from the councilors? Is there a motion?
Motion, upon the request of the town clerk, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, it is so ordered that the town council defers their authority under the Votes Act of 2022, Chapter 92, Section 72, on police detail assignments for elections to the town clerk and police chief or their designees until revote by council vote. So moved.
Second. Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, please.
Councilor Erika.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Aye.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much, Clerk Casey. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
One last thing, a public announcement.
Please.
We have two elections coming up, September 19th and November 7th. If you'd like to vote in that election, make sure you are registered. If you're not a registered voter, you can simply go online, go to the portal, and register the vote, or you can always visit us here at Town Hall. We'd be glad to sit down with you and talk to you about it. And again, anybody running for office, it's coming up shortly, so make sure you pay attention to the appropriate dates that you need to pick up your nomination papers.
Thank you, Clerk Casey. Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam President. Jim, do you need help covering the polls?
We always need election workers. We're having a lot of difficulties. The current political climate has pulled a lot of my experienced workers away, along with some other issues. And if anybody's interested, they can go online to the town website, and they can find an application, or they can just give us a call at Town Hall here, and we can mail one out for them. Or again, visit us.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Councilor Ryan, for that. Thank you, Clerk Casey.
Have a good night.
All right. Moving on, the next set of items on our agenda is a series of public hearings, so please bear with us while we open the public hearing, then take up the motion, close the public hearing, and then vote. So the first one is 23029, Mayor, Establishment of New Revolving Fund for Tree Replacement, or Take Up Any Action Relative Thereto. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing for 23029?
So moved.
Second. Clerk Simino, roll call, vote, please.
Councilor Erika.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. With that, I will refer to Councilor Reynolds, Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, for the recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. Early this evening, the Ways and Means Committee did meet and recommended approval by unanimous vote for motion 23029.
Thank you very much, Councilor Reynolds. And if my colleagues will indulge me, I'm happy to speak on this motion, as this is part of our tree protection ordinance, which you'll remember, we voted in council on April 25th. So there's going to be three components to this complete ordinance, or this complete tree protection plan. So the first was the ordinance, which we voted. This is the second item, which is to set up a revolving account, which will eventually pay for replacement trees. And then the third component, which is not yet before you will, the idea is to incentivize large-scale developers through the site plan review process, which will eventually be funding this tree replacement fund. So I'm happy to take questions. I don't need, I won't belabor the explanation, but I'm more than happy to assist with any questions people have. All right. With that, I see none. Is there anyone from the general public who would wish to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Clerk Simino, vote to close the public hearing.
Councilor Erika.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. And now, is there, we have two motions here for Order 23029.
Madam President. Motion to amend Municipal Code 3.140.050 to include subsection J establishing the Tree Replacement Revolving Fund. So moved.
Second. Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, vote, please.
Councilor Erika.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Madam President. Motion that, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the general laws, the town of Braintree hereby sets the maximum amount that may be spent during the fiscal year 2024, beginning July 1, 2023, for the tree replacement revolving fund as $100,000. So moved.
Second. Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, vote, please.
Councilor Erika.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Aye.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for helping to move that along. Moving on, 23031, Mayor, Request for Appropriations, CPC Appropriation Historic Inventory, or Take Up Any Action Relative Thereto. This is a public hearing. Do we have a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second. Clerk Simino, roll call, vote, please.
Councilor Erika.
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Maglio.
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. I will now turn to the Chair of the Committee of Ways and Means for his recommendation on Order 23031. Councilor Reynolds.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means met on May 16th and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council on Order 23031.
Thank you very much, Councilor Reynolds. Director Santucci-Razi, thank you so much for being with us this evening, and I will turn to you if you'd like to add anything.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam President, and members of the council. Just very quickly, there was quite a bit of material that was provided in advance of the meeting. We are here seeking $15,750, which will couple up with the funds that were allocated in 2020 by the council, which was an additional $30,000.
Liz Manning, our CPC manager, has done quite a bit of legwork on this particular proposal and has reached out to some firms. We have vetted a qualified firm, both through their references and also through Michael Steinite at Mass Historical Commission. The Historic Commission felt very comfortable with this individual firm. It's called Eaton Architects, and we're looking for this additional funding so we can get this project back on track and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Santucci-Razi. Do any members of the council have questions? Counsel Ryan?
Yes, could you explain the project a little bit, please?
Yes, so what this project entails is, we have hired a historical architect. There's about 120 properties on a list, and what they will do is, they will inventory those properties and prepare the forms that can then be loaded up to the Mass Historical website. And those forms include things about the actual structure itself, and also if there was anything significant, if a significant person lived there, if an activity happened there, if there was something relative to history that took place at this particular property, it would also be noted on the form as well.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the council? Counsel Hume?
So we have all the lists of these properties. Is there any disruption to the homeowner, the current homeowners with this project? Or how are they involved in this, if at all?
Typically, no. There's a lot of research, actually, through the town clerk's office for resident lists and things like that, also through the Historic Society. But I don't believe there'll be any interruption unless people would like to share something. We've actually had some inquiries about when this was going to happen from some residents, actually through the council president, that were eager to, for this to take place as one of their properties was listed on the list.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hume. I have a question, Director. So how, how can residents find out? Like, what are the qualifying determinants of a property to be included on this list? And how would residents find that information out?
We had, and I apologize if I might not have all this information, but the previous director had worked with a historic consultant that had put together, I think, a much larger list of properties, and then they were sort of culled through. Some of them have already been inventoried, but they suggest that certain ones, especially age, significance, be re-inventoried because the forms have been updated through the website as well.
Thank you so much. So is it expected that if your property is on this list of 120, that then there will be some official documentation, or is there like a further?
Yeah, the official documentation is the creation of this form
Okay.
that then is made available to the public. And you can search any community in the Commonwealth on this website. It's actually a great website if you're interested. Your property very well could have been inventoried. And just because it's inventoried doesn't necessarily mean it has any regulatory relation to the things that the Historical Commission does. So some people sometimes are like, I don't want my property, I don't want my property to be historic. But just because it's being inventoried doesn't mean that it's in a district or is on a, either the state or the federal register. If you are interested in elevating a property to that level, these forms actually help because they contain all the data that would substantiate elevating it to a register level.
Excellent. Thank you so much, and I think this is a great project, as a lot of the properties are in District 5, so would love to know, once this is underway, if you can just let us know, that would be super, and I can pass it on to constituents.
Yep, we plan on having a kickoff with the consultant, probably in the next couple weeks. We just wanted to make sure that the funding was in place first.
Great, thank you. Anything else from my colleagues? All right, is there anyone from the general public who would wish to speak? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, please.
Counsel Berica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, motion that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44B of the General Laws and with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, the appropriation of $15,750 from the Historic Resources Fund for the Historic Resources Survey 2020, additional funds FY23 CPA application. Said funds shall be expended in the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Director of Planning and Community Development. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Berica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our transfer of funds series. 23035, Mayor, transfer funds from the Human Resources Salary Reserve article, FY23 Fire, COLA, or take up any action relative thereto. This is also a public hearing. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, please.
Counsel Berica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. Chairman Reynolds, I will turn to you for your recommendation from the Committee of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Madam President. Previous, this evening, early this evening, the Committee in Ways and Means voted three to zero to unanimously recommend approval on this motion.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the mayor's office who wishes to speak on this matter? Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you so much for allowing us to be here. These are for the raises for the COLA that we negotiated with the fire department, and this is the fiscal '23, 1.5% annual cost of living increase.
Thank you very much. Is there any comments or questions from the council? Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. So I assume that this includes retroactive pay?
Yes, this is fiscal '23, so it would be from July 1st of '22 through June 30th of '23.
Okay, so most of this is going to be retro, we're going to implement it before the end of June?
Yes.
Excellent.
That's the goal.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Any other comments from councilors? I just want to reaffirm for the residents who may be watching, this is not a new appropriation of funds, which, this is not a new request for money. This is money we had set aside, and the council needs to authorize moving it from one bucket to another bucket. I will be in full support of this this evening to make sure all of our town employees getting the pay they deserve for all their hard work, and this one in particular is for our firefighters. Counsel Ryan?
I just want to say, to build on that, it's just a small vote we're taking tonight, procedural, but I want to thank the HR Director and the fire department for all the behind-the-scenes collective bargaining that's gone on to get to this point, and the firefighters and the employees in the fire department are very deserving of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Any other comments from councilors? Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Simino, roll call, please, to close the public hearing.
Counsel Berica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. Could we have a motion, please?
Motion that the town vote to amend the wage and salary classification schedules as motion recently amended by appropriating the sum of $115,378.90 for the purpose of funding a wage increase for the IAFF 920 employees effective July 1st, 2022, and for this purpose, the sum of $115,378.90 be transferred from the FY2023 Salary Reserve article, and further that the Director of Municipal Finance is authorized to allocate said sums to and among the various accounts affected thereby in such amounts as are proper and required, and in anticipation of approval of these agreements, funds were appropriated to the reserve account in the originally approved fiscal year 2023 budget. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, please.
Counsel Berica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to 23036, Mayor, transfer funds from the Human Resources Salary Reserve article, FY23 Utility/Non-Union 0.5% COLA, or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Berica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. Chairman Reynolds, if you could give your recommendation, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Early this evening, the Committee in Ways and Means met this and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council for order 23036.
Thank you very much. Director DePina, I'll turn again to you.
This particular one is for the half a percent. We had settled with other unions, and specifically utility, there's a clause, like a Me Too clause, I think we've referred to it as a few times. So they're not penalized for settling earlier. So this is the half a percent that we've given to fire, schools, and library already.
Thank you very much, Director. Counsel Ryan?
So there's a reopener in their contract. If somebody gets more than they do, they go back, they get what the other union got?
Yes.
So to speak.
Yes, so to speak.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Any other members of the council? Right, anyone from the general public wish to speak? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call for closing the public hearing.
Counsel Berica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
We have two motions for this. Is there a motion for the first one?
Yes, Madam President. Motion that the town vote to amend the wage and salary classification schedules as most recently amended by appropriating the sum of $6,059.18 for the purpose of funding a wage increase for the utility workers, Union of America AFL-CIO Local 466UWUA employees effective July 1st, 2022, and for this purpose, the sum of $6,059.18 be transferred from the Human Resources Salary Reserve article, and further that the Director of Municipal Finance is authorized to allocate said sums to and among the various accounts affected thereby in such amounts as are proper and required. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, please.
Counsel Berica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Madam President, motion that the town vote to amend the wage and salary classification schedule as most recently amended by appropriating the sum of $17,021.76 for the purpose of funding a wage increase for the non-union employees effective July 1st, 2022, and for this purpose, the sum of $17,021.76 be transferred from the Human Resources Salary Reserve article, and further that the Director of Municipal Finance is authorized to allocate said sums to and among the various accounts affected thereby in such amounts as are proper and required. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, please.
Counsel Berica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. Next, we have 23037, Mayor, transfer funds from the Human Resources Salary Reserve article, FY23 Schools COLA, or take up any action relative thereto. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Simino, roll call, please.
Counsel Berica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. Chairman Reynolds, for your recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. Early this evening, the Ways and Means Committee voted unanimously for a recommended approval on this motion.
Thank you very much. Director DePina, do you have anything you would like to add?
This is fiscal '23 for the schools. We have settled at 1.5%.
Thank you so much. Any councilors have any comments or questions? Seeing none? Anyone from the general public? Seeing none? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, Madam President. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, motion that the town vote to amend the wage and salary classification schedules as most recently amended by appropriating the sum of $930,871.9 for the purpose of funding a wage increase for the Braintree Educator employees effective July 1, 2022. And for this purpose, the sum of $930,871.9 be transferred from the Human Resources Salary Reserve Article. And further, that the Director of Municipal Finance is authorized to allocate said sums to and among the various accounts affected thereby in such amounts as are proper and required. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. Final motion on our funds transfer this evening is 23039, Mayor. Transfer funds from the FY2024 Finance/Administration/Reserve Account FY2024 Utility/Non-Union/Fire COLA, or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Clerk Simino, roll call, vote, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. Chairman Reynolds, I'll turn back to you.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Early this evening, the Ways and Means Committee met and voted unanimously, three to zero, in favor of recommended passing of this motion.
Thank you very much.
It's been a long evening.
Director DePina.
Thank you. This here is for fiscal '24. We're trying to plan accordingly to prevent any extra work with retroactive calculations. So for July 1, utility, non-union, fire is listed. The other unions that we have settled with had time in which to budget it for fiscal '24, so that's why they're not all listed. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you so much. That's very helpful. Any questions from the council? Counsel Reynolds?
Just a question for clarification. Director, I'm just looking at the last page here that gives us the breakout for the non-union, and I do see that we have a Chief of Staff Town Solicitor that is listed twice, about midway down on the list, and then probably about the fourth one up from the bottom. I just wanted a clarification on... The dollar amounts are exactly the same.
It's probably just a duplicate error in the spreadsheet. I'm going to flip it.
Okay, so would that $64,878.39 be a correct number?
For fiscal '24, right?
This is for fiscal effective July 1, so this would be... Am I reading the right one? Hold up.
That's okay.
Yes, right, '24.
For '24, okay. Yes, it looks like it just duplicated. And the amounts are the same, so it's an error on the spreadsheet. There's not going to be two raises there.
All right, okay, thank you. And then just please confirm that the bottom number, the net amount of $64,000, or I should say the gross amount of $64,878.39, is that still an accurate number with the two duplicates being listed?
It would be reduced.
It would be reduced.
So it would be reduced by the $2,416.34, by one of those, instead of having two of those.
Okay, that will give us a new number of?
Yes. I can grab my calculator.
Just wanted to make sure that we have that clear.
Thank you for that, Counselor Reynolds.
Okay.
Take your time.
No, thank you, I apologize.
That's no problem. Take your time, Mr. DePina, and thank you, Counselor Reynolds, for that. Clerk Simino, can we just update the documents when they're revised?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
My apologies for not catching that, Madam President, in the Ways and Means hearing.
My apologies, it was on there in the first place. The new number is $62,462.30.
Did you capture that, Counselor?
My math confirms that.
Excellent. So we have the motion accurate. Thank you, Counselor Reynolds, and thank you for doing that on the fly. Did you have a question, Counsel Ryan?
Yes, I did, Madam President. Thank you. And what is the percentage increase for FY24?
Two percent.
Across the board.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments or questions? Anyone from the general public would like to speak on this? Seeing none?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Clerk Simino, roll call to close the public hearing for 23039, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
And we have three motions for this. Is there a motion?
First motion, motion that the town vote to amend the wage and salary classification schedules as most recently amended by appropriating the sum of $24,357.92 for the purpose of funding a wage increase for the Utility Workers Union of America AFL-CIO local number 466 U-WUA employees effective July 1, 2023. And for this purpose, the sum of $24,357.92 be transferred from the Finance Administration Reserve Account. And further, that the Director of Municipal Finance is authorized to allocate said sums to and among various accounts affected thereby in such amounts as are proper and required. So moved.
Second.
Clerk...
The reason, and I apologize for interrupting, the reason, I was confused at first, but it's because the positions were separated, Town Solicitor, Chief of Staff. But in our computer program, which is Munis, it retains the Town Solicitor/Chief of Staff. So we presently have a Chief of Staff, and presently we have a Town Solicitor. So the original amount is correct.
If I may, through the President...
Go ahead.
And those salaries for each individual is the same salary?
I believe they are.
Okay, so, could you, I mean, I don't know where we go with this. We just bring a confirmation tomorrow or something, a follow-up or something of that nature?
We'll have them send an email confirmation, but we can vote on it this evening.
I believe the Vice Chair might have a question? Excuse me, not the Vice Chair. Pardon me.
No, so it's the same individual making the double money?
No, there are two individuals. There used to be one individual that held a dual role as the Chief of Staff/Town Solicitor, and now we have two separate roles, where we have a Town Solicitor and a Chief of Staff, so there's...
At the same exact rate right now, right?
Right now, it's on theirs, I guess.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right, yeah, I just feel as if, I think we should have some kind of a clarification follow-up. I wouldn't have a problem voting on the number.
Counselor, yes, so Clerk Simino confirmed we'll get in writing, thank you for that, in writing clarification tomorrow, but it is acceptable to vote this evening.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, and thank you for clarifying.
Point of clarification, that's two motions away. We're on the first motion. That's the third motion.
Yes, so motion one, it has been read, and we have a second. Clerk Simino, roll call for the first motion.
Yes. Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Second motion, that the town vote to amend the wage and salary classification schedules as most recently amended by appropriating the sum of $156,146.11 for the purpose of funding a wage increase for the International Association of Firefighters local 920IAFF employees effective July 1, 2023. And for this purpose, the sum of $156,146.11 be transferred from the Finance Administration Reserve Account. And further, that the Director of Municipal Finance is authorized to allocate said sums to and among various accounts affected thereby in such amounts as are proper and required. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Simino, roll call on the second motion.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Aye.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Counsel Ryan.
Last motion, Madam President, using the original dollar amounts listed in the motion, that the town vote to amend the wage and salary classification scheduled as most recently amended by appropriating the sum of $64,878.39 for the purpose of funding a wage increase for the non-union employees effective July 1, 2023. And for this purpose, the sum of $64,878.39 be transferred from the Finance Administration Reserve Account. And further, that the Director of Municipal Finance is authorized to allocate said sums to and among the various accounts affected thereby in such amounts as are proper and required. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Clerk Simino. Prior to the roll, in the event that this dollar value needs to be changed, what is the procedure for the council if we're voting on this tonight?
Madam Chairman, if we need to take another vote, we'll take another vote.
Yeah, that's what, okay, that's what I was wondering.
It would just be another vote in another time.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Ryan. Thank you, Clerk Simino.
Yep, ready for vote.
Counsel Hume.
Yeah, so there's an Assistant Town Solicitor in this number? Who is the current Acting Town Solicitor?
So we're funding this position even though we don't have an individual in the Town Solicitor role? Is that correct?
We will fund it because we're unsure where the person will come in and within the band, so we're ensuring that we keep it in the salary schedule appropriately.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Historically, the town funds every position 100%.
Just confirm me.
Yep, so historically, so it's something I don't agree with, because we have vacancies all the time in the town. So it sets up a nice pool of money for you to have when you need to have money in the middle of the year. So I think we should use a vacancy rate, but I probably said too much already.
Any other discussion before we call the roll on this third motion? Clerk Simino, roll call, vote, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Aye.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Maglio.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. DePina. At this time, I would like to go back in our agenda and take up our communications item 03323, the Master Plan Steering Committee Roadshow Presentation, and I believe we have Assistant Director Murphy with us tonight. Thank you so much for being here and for sticking with us. Thank you. Yes.
Can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. And you also have a handout as well. Connor and I are going to do this together this evening?
Oh, thank you, Director.
So I'll start it out, and then I will turn it over to Connor to take over. So as everybody knows, we're doing our master plan. We're about two-thirds of the way into the process, and a part of that is conducting this roadshow. So we've been hitting up about 15 different boards and commissions and different groups in the community, some civic organizations, the Braintree Chamber, to talk to them about the different goals and strategies that we've come up with that is going to help create the vision for the community that we have prepared as part of the master plan. So tonight, what we're going to do is we're going to do a brief presentation just about what we're going to be doing, and then the module is very, very long, and if we went through the entire thing, it would likely take probably three to four hours. I don't think anyone's interested in being here that long, so we're going to touch on a few of the items that I think are more germane to the council. I know that you're interested in all the issues in the community, but just some takeaways and things that I've been hearing at different meetings and comments from different members of the council that seem to be items of interest and maybe more popular than some other items. So again, on our process, so we started with Phase 1, which was Braintree yesterday and tomorrow, Phase 2, which was Braintree tomorrow, creating the vision and goals, and here we are in Phase 3, how are we going to achieve the Braintree that we want to see in the next 10 years? And then our final phase will be starting up in July, where we have nailed down the strategies, and we begin to actually take all of this information, all of the graphic, and put it into a readable, user-friendly deliverable, which will be Braintree's master plan. Just a little bit about engagement. We've been hyper-focused on that. That was one of the main commitments I had made to Necca Chorus when we got this thing going, that I didn't want anybody in the community to feel as though they haven't had an opportunity to provide input. And having been in the community for quite some time, I have to say, we're very proud of these numbers. We have 2,267 forms of participation so far, and I would say through the roadshows, we've probably picked up maybe another, maybe even 200 or so. So a lot to be proud of as a community here, and public participation is what we truly believe makes the plan, the public's plan. So congratulations to Braintree and their residents for coming out and helping us in this endeavor. So the draft vision and goals organization, we have our overall vision, and then we've broken it down into five core themes, which represent the eight sort of disciplines in the master plan. So a few of them are lumped together in our first core theme, which is conservation, preservation, and sustainability. We have our second theme, which is economic growth, third, transportation, fourth is housing, and then fifth is our public facilities. Just again, another shout-out to our website. It's a great resource. There's a ton of stuff on there, old documents, new documents, and then you can literally follow the master plan from our first kickoff meeting, including items that were distributed at meetings, the results of various activities that we undertook with the Master Plan Steering Committee, as well as the public, and then our minutes, links to videos, all of that good stuff. So if you haven't had a chance to check that out, please do. If you're interested in why we're talking about something or how we got here, you should likely be able to gather that from visiting the website. So I'd like to quickly read our vision. This is sort of that main vision, the sort of the number one, which we then break out into the core themes. In 2033, Braintree will be a well-run, picturesque, welcoming, family-centered suburban community that prioritizes and protects its residential neighborhoods, high-quality and competitive public schools, recreational facilities, rich historic buildings, natural resources, thriving squares, and business districts, and community events that instill pride. People will be attracted to Braintree because they aspire to put down roots, raise a family, and belong to a supportive and inclusive community as they age. Braintree will have an abundance of natural open space suitable for active and passive outdoor recreation, as well as a strong program to reduce our municipal carbon footprint. Braintree town officials will encourage and value collaborative engagement and input from residents who will take part in town planning initiatives that guide economic growth and development to help ensure fiscal health. So that's what we're striving for, and that's what we want to be, and we're now, how are we actually going to get there? Again, going back quickly to the five core themes, which are the disciplines of the master plan. We covered those earlier. The basics around what is a strategy, it's a deliberate choice about how to achieve your vision and goal. It involves trade-offs, it's specific, measurable, actionable, realistic, and time-based. But we take in a lot of different factors when we're looking at these strategies, and trying to meld, you know, visionary and what we would like to see with really what can Braintree do, what is realistic for Braintree, and how can we achieve that? We want to set goals that we can achieve and that we can measure our progress against. I talked a little bit about the roadshow modules in the beginning, and where we've been, and how we've been gathering all of this data. The typical module, again, we would be here for four hours, we're asking people to rate these ideas and strategies on a scale from 1 to 5. So 1 is "I hate it," 5 is "I love it," and then the support is 1 is a low priority, and 5 is the highest priority. So we've provided everybody with an exit poll, and after this evening, if you folks wouldn't mind completing the exit poll, I've provided the numbers in the column of all of the strategies that go along with Module 8, and you can simply just denote your support for something and then your priority. And it's okay if you support something, but it's a lower priority, because there's quite a few things that you're probably going to like in here, but then again, you know, not everything is going to be a number-one priority. So we want to get an understanding of, okay, Braintree likes A, B, and C, but is it A, B, and C in order? Is it CBA? You know, and how are we going to attack those strategies? How you should rate these strategies, so there's just some different suggestions from the consultant, and how, we talked a little bit about this, greatest positive impact on most people, so is this strategy going to benefit the most of your constituents and residents in Braintree? Biggest bang for the buck, for the value, is this worth the money? How can we stretch the dollar? And how is that going to play out? Effect on residential property taxes, promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion is something that's very important when we're thinking about strategies, and are they far-reaching? Are they inclusive? And then promoting sustainability and resilience, which has become a very popular term and topic throughout this process. So again, back to the support, I think everybody gets that part. 1 is no support, and 5 is "I absolutely love this." And then again, on the prioritizing that, it's okay to have something as a 5, but it's a 1 priority, because as you go through, you're going to see a lot of different things that you like, and I might even suggest going through them once and choosing if you support it or not, and then going back and evaluating sort of the things that you support, how you would prioritize them. So what we're going to do today is I'm going to run through some of these, again, that I think have come up in various meetings and topics that I think the council will be very helpful in weighing in on. And then we have provided the exit poll, everyone has that, it's about three pages. There are 44 strategies that we're asking you to look at. If you feel as though you don't want to weigh in on one, just skip that particular one and go to the next one, but we ask everybody to try to give us as much input as they can. And if you could either drop those off, scan them, you can even take a picture and send us those pictures, if you wouldn't mind getting... us those pictures, if you wouldn't mind getting those over to us by Friday. We're trying to get all this together so that we can have a very meaningful meeting with the Master Plan Steering Committee on the 22nd. Okay, are there any questions from anybody? Okay. What I'm gonna do now is, yes?
I'm sorry, Director Sancho Girozzi. I have one question.
Yes.
On the forty-four strategies that you have before us.
Yes.
Is there a method to why these forty-four are for the council versus other strategies for other? Because it doesn't look like we have every single strategy.
Correct. The consultant put together the modules and broke the topics up into the different groups. If you feel as though there is something that you have as a different idea or a new strategy, you can put that on, you can send that to us as well. But the forty-four were chosen by the consultant.
And then the preceding numbers that precede the letters correspond to?
So if you look at your module, this short document here, this is just a few pages. If you go to the second page, all of the strategies are listed here, and they start with a number which correlates to the core themes. So if you're interested in connecting those, you can get the core themes from the website. And then the letters are just the, you know, the other numbering system.
Yep, thank you. That answers my questions.
Okay. And if there's some, if you see something on here that you want to talk about briefly this evening, or if you have any questions, you can interject with those, and we will just jot those down as well. And again, if I don't touch on something and you'd like to talk about it, we can always go back. So looking at the list here, I thought 2A was something worth talking about this evening. And Strategy 2A says, "Study the fiscal impact of the removal of the transfer station and what revenue would need to be replaced on an annual basis. Consider non-renewal of the town's lease to the transfer station and partner with the private sector to redevelop the site." I chose this because I hear a lot of talk around the community about Covanta. It's usually not overly positive. It's usually odor-related, and the desire for it to be gone. So I'm curious if the council has any questions about this, if they want to discuss this a little bit more, if they want to add anything to this particular strategy.
Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Yes, I've already given this a five and a five. I feel very strongly that that is an impediment to the quality of life in our town, its existence, its location. It is also an impediment to our potential economic growth as well, in a location that would not impact some of the other goals that this master plan study has articulated through surveys and through discussion in terms of the vision statement. I think it supports the vision statement very clearly, very directly. From an economic standpoint, I think that it's going to be like taking a Band-Aid off if we decide to say goodbye to this use. There will be a transition period where we will have a sea dip in revenues from that particular area. However, I feel very strongly, as we move forward, it will far, the new use of that site will far outweigh, from a financial standpoint, the benefits will far outweigh what we have there today. And again, I can't emphasize strongly enough about the impact on the quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ryan?
Good evening, Director. So my question is, the things that we have before us to vote, to assign numbers to, to rate, so it starts at one H. So like, what was 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, 1F, and 1G? I'm just wondering what we don't have before us, and I'm just kind of wondering, I'm not really following the thought process where we're getting just parts of it and not getting the whole thing.
Okay, so kind of just back to a comment that I made earlier, there was, I think there was a, I caught a hundred and something different strategies. And, 188? 188, thank you Connor. And the consultant was trying to take the ones that related to the various disciplines and put them in the modulators. If you would like-
So can I ask you a question? So these are the Braintree Town Council-related issues?
They are, sir, yes. Yep, we had fifteen different modules. So for example, I was at Historic Commission last night. We only talked about the historic ones. So if you feel as though you'd like to see that full list and you'd like to weigh in on other items, we can send you that, too. I just don't have that, you know, ready to-
Okay. Okay. I guess some of it, you know, voting on some of these issues is the way they're worded, though. It might be almost like voting on it with, for example, it says like, do you want to vote on a plan to replace the fleet of vehicles for the town of Braintree? So by a certain time, do all the vehicles in Braintree, do a portion of our vehicles, a large portion, have to be electric vehicles?
Which one are you looking at, just so I can?
I don't know, I was scanning through the-
Oh, okay.
Real quick.
So I think the strategy is what's important. How we're going to accomplish that is what we will do once the master plan is adopted. So maybe Braintree realizes that they can only convert X amount of their vehicles or something like that, but if there's a desire to have that as something that becomes something that somebody in the town is working on for the community, that's really kind of the question, I guess, if that makes any sense. They'll be refined, they'll be streamlined, like, we've had some questions from different boards, "Well, how are we gonna do this?" Well, that's what we have to figure out. And in order to even talk about figuring out, we've gotta get it as a strategy into the master plan.
I guess my point is that you're asking how important we think some of these issues are, and it might be something that we don't have to do as a town, but we'd like to do, and it might be something that we absolutely 100% have to do. So how important is the opinion that whether we do it or not, because we're gonna have to do it? So it's kind of not clear.
Yeah.
As I read this quickly, what are the things that we have to do as a community?
I don't necessarily think any of these are like mandate-level, or at least right now. They could become mandates. I mean, things, you know, become, I mean, who would have forecasted the MBTA communities? Now it's a mandate. So if something changes from, or becomes a mandate, say, in two years, then that will be something that will be advanced over a different strategy.
Yeah, because some of these things, as I read them quickly, seem like something we might, you know, it might, we might have to do.
Right.
Electric vehicles, coal generation plants, environmental things that we get mandated to do. And so I know where I work, we have to have our fleet of vehicles be electric by, you know, 25%, 50%, 75%, 100% in the future, so we can check off we do or we don't want to do it, and we're gonna do it, you know?
Right.
I'm just trying to understand how that ties in.
No, I totally understand that, Counselor, and that's why I was kind of like, you know, that's where we also, too, we're going to be doing a two-hour session with all the department heads on Thursday, and they'll be able to interject with the different things that they know that could be more, they know it's going to be coming, so that might be rising to a priority. There'll definitely be things that will translate to mandates, there'll be things that are just, "We gotta do them because we gotta do them," and then there's some things in here that are very, you know, we have the dreaming, you know, which is part of visioning and part of, you know, advancing. You know, all of these things are not gonna be possible, but it's just, it's a matter of trying to cull them down into something that the community can actually achieve. You know, we could put 188 things in there, we know we're not gonna be able to do 188 things.
Yeah. And then some of these are really like very 30,000-foot view-
Correct, correct.
You know, the town, let's get rid of the transfer station, and then some of these are hire a dedicated economic development staff member. So, I mean, is that part of the master plan, like, getting down to this position level of who you're gonna hire?
I think that has come up. It's come up because there is a lot of concern about economic development in the community, and that if we want to make that a priority for the community, is that something that should be invested in at a greater level?
Yeah. So as a town council, whenever I review this, you know, it's kind of, and I write my name on it, Charles Ryan, these are my, how I grade the priorities, and I write, you know, here's my name on this, this is what I think. It's almost like going to a class, and, you know, this is the problem I'm gonna face, going to a class where you gotta evaluate the teacher afterwards, and, you know, five, 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 everybody gets a five, everything's wonderful. So it's kind of hard to, you know, say which one of these things that, in theory, are all very, you know, should be done, you know?
Yeah.
What's gonna be done.
I think some of them, too, could end up, you could end up seeing a few strategies grouped into a larger strategy that is somewhat phased. But kind of getting back to the rating, Counselor, you could have, that's why I suggested, you could say five across the board. I support all of these. These are awesome, these are gonna make Braintree just the best place ever. But then you get back to prioritizing them. And even though you like something, it could be a low priority. It's okay if something's a low priority. So that's how you would kind of, that's how we would gauge. There's a lot of support for these five things, but this is more of a priority over this particular item.
And who came up with all of these?
The consultant.
The consultant.
Oh, wait, the, which, what do you?
The things we're gonna be rating.
Oh, those have been, the consultant, some things, things that we've gathered through public participation and input. We've been hearing things that come up, reoccurring items that have come up in different forums. We've done two public charrettes in this room and asked people to write different ideas and things. So what, when we see, you know, we write them on little stickies, when you have 50 people here and 20 stickies say the same thing, well, that's something that has reoccurred multiple times throughout the process, and clearly something that has been elevated to a strategy. And then the consultant, this is what they do. They help communities advance. They help us create our vision, and planners by nature are sort of prescribed to figure out how to get from point A to point B.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Hume?
Madam President, thank you, Director. So a couple of questions. This came from the consultant, all the feedback from master plan committee members, community participants, all that. I'm looking at this like, as almost a wish list, because we just approved the budget, right? There's a lot of things in here with cost measures. So what's the goal for us to answer these? Because I'm looking at some of these, and I'm like, no, because there's a huge cost, and we just approved the budget where like, our foreseeable future revenue streams are difficult. Now, there's some addressed in here about revenue streams, but what I like a lot of these things, absolutely, is a lot of the residents. So I could answer five, but I could also answer a one. So how should we be answering? Because this, I'm struggling, like, what do you want from the council for these answers? And what are you going to do with them? Because we could say, yeah, these are all great, but they're never gonna happen because there's never gonna be funding for these.
Okay, so kind of back to, I just pulled up this slide here that we've provided for just some guidance, you know? And if, Counselor, if you feel as though something is just cost prohibitive for the community, or just infeasible and is not gonna provide the benefit for, you know, return on investment, however you want to say it, then that might be something that you don't support.
But there's also some, too, that I'm like, I don't have enough information with the little blurb on some of these that are in here to like, answer it and rate it appropriately. So what do we do with those? Leave them blank, or?
What would be an example of one?
Oh geez, let's see. Okay. I mean, I'm looking at a lot of them, there's a cost involved into a lot of them. I just, I mean, we have a whole bunch, there's a few, but-
Yeah. If you, Counselor, if you feel as though you need more information on something, or you want to add to that, you can include that when you send your stuff to us as well. Yep, yep.
Counselor Ringus?
So I guess, I think we're all sort of on that same thing, the way we look at it. So as we look at this, are we, I guess ultimately, as you move towards the race, do you have a plan? What is the timeline we're looking at? Because like Counselor Hume said, there might be something here, like, I know in the next, based on what we've seen with budget numbers as they stand now, in the next two years, that's a no-go, just based, we're not gonna have that money in the next two years. But if, are we looking, I mean, is this master plan, is this supposed to encompass 10 years, 15 years?
10-year plan, sir.
10 years.
Yep.
All right, so we're looking at the 10 years.
Yep, maybe even more. If we went the way we went with our last one, it's a 30-year plan.
My daughter will be in her 30s, I'd say that. All right, so I guess the other thing is, I do, on one hand, I like how, whether it was your plan, or whether it was the consultant's plan, how we have maybe strategized a little bit in putting certain bullet points to certain audiences that maybe are the, for lack of better, were the subject matter experts on this.
Correct, yep.
So in essence, this would be the ones that have been identified as the council's, you know, subject matter area. I would like, if it was possible, to see all of them.
Yep.
Maybe, I don't want to vote on them all, because I don't want to go through 188 of these, but I would like to see them all, because I would like to see how they're playing off of one another. I'd also like to see what other audiences in town are looking at, maybe so I could have a better understanding of what maybe the historic folks are looking at, or what the department heads are looking at, or what the business community is looking at, because I think it all kind of comes together. And the only, I guess, question I have in there is, let's say historic, say there was five that the historic people you were talking to rated as a five, so those are their top five, and let's say that we all do this, and we, maybe there's, you know, whatever, 25 come out of here. How ultimately are we blending those together? Like, how are you blending the different subject matter areas and different audiences together to create that final master plan?
So the consultant, we're kind of on the street, you know, doing these roadshows, and some of the master plan steering committee members have been doing them as well to help us, just to spread out the work. We have been sending the exit polls to the consultant, and they're like tallying those up, and we've also been sending them any questions or other feedback that we've received from the groups as well. And we're going to talk about all of that on the 22nd with the master plan steering committee member, where then we're going to even, you know, cull down even more.
And not to put you on the spot or make you commit to a date, but given what your packet says, we're eyeing like December for this, December for this to all be done, is that accurate?
Yes.
So that's about six months away. Do you think that's a timeline that we'll be able to stick to?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
Do you think we'll have this all called down, ready to look at a final master plan by December?
Oh, yeah, we'll have this called down within the next probably 30 to 45 days. Yep, yep. And the full list of strategies is on the master plan website, but we can email that document to Ms. Semino for distribution to the council as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's definitely a good read. I mean, I've read through it a million times. It's interesting to see all of the different things that maybe we haven't even thought about as a community, or maybe it was just a very small idea that now has a lot of oomph behind it, based on the input that we've received so far.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director, and thank you, Counselor Ringus. Counselor Hume, did you have a follow-up?
Maybe this was already answered, but who, like, the consultant put the, everybody compiled these, and this list was just put together, like, nobody's responses were eliminated, so, were any of these vetted, like, these would really be possible? Or is this, is this the wish list that's being presented to us?
What do you mean by no one's been eliminated?
So we're only getting some of these, right? But like, I'm just trying to, because having, not having the history of how this list was comprised of, and what is expected of us, and where it's going, like, how was this list vetted? How did it get to us? Like, other than the consultant and all the residents and master plan-
That's how it was vetted. That's how it was vetted, Counselor.
They just said, hey, we want this, and now it's before us because they wanted it?
Well, so we've, again, so it's, we have- Well, so, we've, again, so it's, we, we have our, we have our vision, and then we have our core themes. And maybe it will be helpful if you visit the website, and if you look at the core themes and sort of what we're looking to achieve, these are things that are going to get us there. So, we have a vision, core themes with goals. So, each vision has a set of goals, and now we need to figure out how we're gonna accomplish those goals. What things are we going to do to actually get there?
Counselor Reynolds, did you have a comment or question?
Yes, please, just as a comment. So, I think all of these questions and comments from my fellow counselors are spot-on. These are exactly, the, I've heard these questions, and, and it's very encouraging to hear the, the tone of your questions, and, and you're picking up exactly what everyone has been experienced who has been on this committee. And as, for those from the public who may be watching, myself and Counselor Firey are the appointees from the council as members of that master plan steering committee. So, we have that history, and I think Counselor, previous speaker spoke to that, not having the history, really, to give that perspective for you, to really, to try to make sense of all the stuff that we're being asked to kinda do this vote on. And I guess I would say, to keep it brief, that this is, there is no, there is no mandate for us to implement this. But, and there is no legal basis for us to follow what this is suggesting. It is a guideline, and I seriously, I, I take that serious, but this is a guideline of feedback. You know, what changes, all of the things, and, and again, the minds of the previous speakers here, these counselors, they narrowed it right down, cost and time. These aren't realistic if this is what we're supposed to be doing, right? Taking that hand, that, that, that approach. We're supposed to be doing this? You're exactly right, asking those questions. They are simply guidelines, and that's how I've governed this, my, my approach through all of this. My, my experiences in this area of planning has taught me, what makes our changes happen by law are our, are our bylaws and our tax policies. Those are the things that are real, are going to make any of these things possible or impossible, or in conjunction with those changes, that's how these things get implemented, if we feel that strongly as a community to get them done. There's a whole host of other issues that will go along when there is more of a very, very deliberate, yes, we're getting behind this one idea. Some of the speakers spoke too about, what are some of the mandates they're seeing from federal government, like the electric car and the electric fleet mandates? A lot of those things will govern us, but what this brings as a valuable piece for us as a community, is what we've had this discussion beforehand. And we truly are narrowing it down from, you know, this huge landscape of possibility, and we're narrowing it down to a more manageable size that is gonna prepare us better for those decisions when we truly are faced with a mandate perhaps, or just a change of events that have such a significant impact or potential for an impact. We've already got ideas to draw from. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other questions or comments?
Director, if I may, can you just clarify? I know we've heard, I, a couple of times about voting. Is there a vote by the council that is necessary on any component of this program? And then how does it get adopted at the end?
The planning board is the adopting body.
Oh, the planning board is, okay.
Yep, yep. We are gonna bring it to the council in the fall. Actually, the July meeting, let me see, June, July, the July meeting, we're gonna be inviting the council and the planning board back, how we've had, had in the past. Some members have attended, some haven't. If you're really interested and you wanna kind of, I suggest that you attend. And then we're gonna be talking more about the strategies and ideas at that point. And then we will be making a presentation to the council, probably in November, I, I think it's around November, maybe even December. We did add a month because we spent some additional time working on the strategies through our technical committees as well. But we will be presenting it to have it be a, a more inclusive sort of public document. We felt it was important to present it to the council as well.
Thank you, that's, that's really helpful, and I, I would just point out, one of the, one of the strategies is to create an implementation committee, which seems like maybe a very good idea if we need to keep track of all of these things and make a follow-through on our commitment to this process, which has been, ooh, lengthy, rightfully so, and with a lot of community engagement. So, tonight from the council, you're asking us to look at the strategies that the consultant has deemed appropriate for the council to review.
Yep.
Rate them on a scale of how much we support them, and then how we would prioritize each of them, and return this to your office by Friday.
Yes, please.
Okay. Just to summarize.
So, if I, if I could, Madam President, I just wanna talk about a few other things that I think are, are things that have come up. So, on page, on the second page at the top, 3D, expand and reinvigorate the 100 Roads program to include annual street and sidewalk maintenance and targeted funding to restore town-maintained street and sidewalks with the most critical maintenance needs. And then there's some things under that as well stating, to understand critical maintenance needs for sidewalks, develop and maintain a record of sidewalk condition data similar to the town's record of pavement condition. For MassDOT-owned streets, track when these streets are slated for repaving, restriping, restoration or reconstruction projects, and collaborate with MassDOT to achieve the town's desired street updates. They are doing a Route 37 corridor study now, we recently had the Grove Street study, so those are two documents that are helpful to the community. And then prioritize design changes consistent with the town's ADA transition plan to improve accessibility and safety on sidewalks, at pedestrian crossings, and in public parking facilities. So, streets, sidewalks, access, what's plowed, what's not paved, I don't like this curbing, those are things I think that everybody in this community has heard more than once from, from the residents. I know that we've heard it quite a bit in the planning department, and we politely send them over to John Thompson. But something like that, I would think, and I'm not trying to persuade anybody's opinions, but something that I think the council would be very interested in weighing in on, given that I'm sure you've heard these most likely complaints over, over time.
Who, through the chair, who came up with that one?
Uh, the consultant.
It's kinda funny, 'cause as I read this, it doesn't seem like the same person wrote this, so if you keep saying the consultant, I, I don't really believe that. The consultant came up with all these.
Well, again, so we've had, we've had a year and a half, counselor, of people telling us what they like and don't like. So, we, they take all that and they, you know, they plug it into categories, and, and, you know, when they see the streets, the concerns about the streets, the 100 Roads program, I can, I can see it now, was on several stickies at one of the, one of the charrettes that we had. So, when I say the consultant, it's based on what they've heard here in Braintree, and maybe I, I should've clarified that.
Yeah, I mean, through the chair, it's just like, you know, some of, like, like 4B is like, you know, make Braintree a wonderful place to live, and then this one's like, you know, pot 17, you know? So, it just doesn't, it just seems like it's a little different.
Welcome, welcome to planning. Welcome to planning.
Counselor, if I might make a, a suggestion, it, Director, maybe you can just go through and list the ones that you feel deserve our more attention when we go back and review this on our own, and then if we can go through that list.
Yeah, that, that's kinda what I was, well, I was just trying to highlight a few things so we could just have a discussion and see what kind of questions you may or may not have. And I see now we're getting a lot of questions about kinda how should we attack this, and, and, you know, that, those kinds of questions, which are great, all questions are, are great. So, that's what I was doing, I was gonna hit on a few, and then Connor was gonna hit on a few as well. And I just, obviously, if there are any questions about anything, which we've had quite a few questions tonight, we can answer those as, as well, as best as we can.
Counselor Maglio?
So, one thing that helps me, and what I've heard explained at other opportunities to go through this exercise, is that when, you might think that there's something on here that's a really great idea, but you're not completely sold because there's something in it that you would like to see changed.
Yep.
That's the beauty of this rating system, is that you could say, wow, this, I don't know, 5H, space for elder affairs, absolutely, that is a huge priority, we have to expand it, we have to have a kitchen, I'm giving that a 5 for priority. But I really don't know that we wanna actually expand equipment and storage, I'd like to tweak that a little, so I'd give it a 3. So, good idea, like to tweak it, high priority. Right?
Yep.
I mean, that's it, that's literally it, that's all anyone has done. I don't think we're gonna, somebody's gonna hold this up and say, Counselor Maglio said 5P was not a priority, right?
No, we're not doing that.
They're concepts.
Yep. And then again, the numbers, the consultant will use those numbers, like, if, if strategy, you know, I'm using fake numbers, 4 triple, you know, triple Z is threes across the board, then we need to have dialogue about how it's going to be tweaked. And that's what the master plan steering committee is, is tasked with. And anybody that's at that meeting on June 22nd, or July 3rd, Thursday in July? I am going to move on to... So, this was an interesting one. Which says, it's 5M. Conduct an annual community satisfaction survey to gauge resident satisfaction with public facility services and responsiveness and accountability of staff and elected and appointed leaders. That's actually come up quite a bit in the process, and hence why it is something that is a strategy. So, it would be interesting, you know, I happen to be in that category, everybody in this room is in that category, you know, how they would feel about, about the residents having an opportunity. I'm sure a lot of residents already expressed that, but in a, in a more formalized manner. 5X is something that's very, very popular throughout the Commonwealth. Consider hiring a diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator to assist with workforce diversity, language access, and cultural competency programs. So, that's something that a lot of communities in the Commonwealth employ, and that could be something that the community is also interested in as well. And I'm gonna turn it over to Connor, and he's gonna go over a few of the strategies as well, and then we can just continue to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Santucci-Razi, and thank you for you and Assistant Director Murphy for all of the efforts over the last 18 months on this.
Awesome. Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I first wanna start with, on page 2, 2F, track underutilized and/or vacant properties for economic development opportunities. I'm sure that's something we've heard, it's something we've seen throughout the public process, and obviously is an important strategy. I would then like to jump down to 2V. Conduct a study to understand Braintree's ability to attract new commercial, life sciences, and other industries with attention to workforce housing needs. 3G, undertake traffic study to analyze cut-through traffic patterns on residential streets and identify appropriate mitigation strategies. And then at the bottom of page 3, I'm sure this is a popular one, 5E, identify the preferred pathway for addressing the space needs and deficiencies at Braintree High School. 5Q, I'm sure it's something we all talked about tonight as well. Create a master plan implementation committee responsible for assisting with and tracking the implementation of the town's master plan, including tracking metrics tied to measurable goals. The committee can also assist with implementation by liaising with town boards and commissions to ensure commitments to implementing the plan alongside their annual strategic and work plan activities. And then just lastly, on page 4, 5T, designate Braintree as an age-friendly and dementia-friendly community. Consider participating in the AARP Age Friendly Community Program to access technical assistance and support.
Thank you so much, Assistant Director. Are there any other questions or comments from the counselors? You don't mind sending, again, to Clerk Semino, the full list of strategies? The link that was in our packet was not, was broken, for whatever reason.
Okay.
Counselor Flaherty?
So, as I look at the, the items, you know, I think what some counselors are reacting to is it seems like a list of really good ideas for a community that has money but isn't sure what to do with it. And that's what we're up against. But the, the thrust of the master plan is to identify our goals, and I think that as you go through this, the thing to do is to think about, well, set aside some of the pragmatic things that are always on our mind, especially right now, as we just went through and reviewed the budget. And as I made my comments about the budget, I felt like I was clubbing a baby seal. This is the problem, and this is the problem, and this is the problem. You have to kind of, to do this right, you have to set that aside a little bit and say, this is what I want our community to be, this is what I hope for, this is where I think if we focus our efforts and attention, we can make a real change for the better. And as you go through this, that's the kinda thing to keep in mind, because if you try and think about how we would do this in the current context of our budget, it's just, it seems pointless. But I don't think it's actually pointless, because revenue problems can be solved, and we should be prepared for what we wanna do with money when that happens.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty, nicely put and helpful. Any other questions, comments? Thank you both. Again, on behalf of the council and the community, this is a massive and important undertaking, and thank you to Counselors Reynolds and Flaherty, because it's additional time that they're spending to serve our community, and it's with gratitude that, for me, and I'm sure others, that you're taking up that role, so thank you. And please, take some time over the next couple of days to, to fill this out and turn it in, and direct your questions to Clerk, through Clerk Semino, to the planning department if anything else arises. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to our new business, is there a motion to move all measures on our new business to their respective committees?
Show move.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Semino, roll call, vote, please.
Counselor Erica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Aye.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Reynolds?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, at 7:30 PM. As always, thank you so much to our team from B-CAM, Bill Needham, and Jerry Comack, who are here with us each, each meeting to bring the council out to our residents. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Show move.
Second?
Second, sorry.
Is there a second? Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Semino, roll call to adjourn.
Counselor Erica?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Hume?
Aye.
Counselor Maglio?
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien?
Aye.
Counselor Ringus?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
All in favor to adjourn?
Thank you very much, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.